It is. A little bit.
I'm going to be very engaged today. I mean, I can talk. I mean, it's just two cases. They want more.
No. We're not.
Oh. Just two hundred and seventy-five. Seventy-one, seventy-eight. That's what we got. We didn't know that. That's what I thought. I didn't remember. I can't. I don't have remembered. It all started. Yeah. People ask me stuff. They throw up when you look at them. I can remember things for four or five years. You're not holding it in. It was not being absent. Do it. You're going to be ready to talk today. They don't tell me more or less. It's about that. You know, my mother, before she passed, with her dementia, she remembered things. She would have an opportunity. She never really knew. And I'm thinking, you know...
It is 5:30, and I'm going to call the Steenville Regular City Council meeting to order. And we're going to... One of the things I want to do before we say the pledge, I have... One of the things we don't do is recognize our first responders enough. They put their lives between danger and us. And so tonight, I've asked Battalion Chief Chuck Elliott if he would lead us in the pledge. So if y'all stand with me and follow Chuck's lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas's side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Chuck. Tonight's invocation is to be led by David Bearden, the Senior Minister at Grand Street Church Christ. If y'all haven't met David, I encourage you to do that.
Thank you. Let's bow, please. Our gracious and almighty God, righteousness and justice are the foundation of your throne. Steadfast love and faithfulness go before you. We acknowledge your presence and power and ask for your blessing on this meeting, the mayor, the city council, the city staff, and all those impacted by these proceedings. We ask for wisdom to spread her wings over this room, bringing clarity of mission and purpose, to guide choices of priority and investment, to communicate needs of the people for the greater good over the desires of the few, to bring stewardship in managing our resources. We pray for those who will soon be added to this respective council. May they even now be endowed with wisdom that will make a smooth transition into a dynamic, united team with a positive impact on this city. We pray with appreciation for those who serve our community, especially those who are the first responders willing to step into danger for us. Please keep them from harm. We pray for the weak, the poor, the oppressed, the ill, the elderly, and the struggling of our community. May we, as their fellow citizens, especially those who represent your name in our area churches, give service and resources to meet the needs beyond the limits of municipal funding and make this community a shining example of one built on the principles of your grace. I pray this out of respect for and in the name of your greatest demonstration of love, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, David. Okay, we'll turn to our first item on the regular agenda, Citizens' General Discussion. I have two requests. One is by Michael Martin, so we'll call Michael up first. Remember, you have three minutes to address the council. Unless there's some questions or someone from the council members.
Okay, my name is Michael Martin. I live at 8845 FM 205 in Steenville. I have with me, and I'm here as the chairman of the Advisory Board for the Senior Citizens. I have with me two other members of the Advisory Board, Jan Smith and Ms. Judith Mather. Our purpose in being here tonight is to request clarification on what some of our duties are.
I have handouts. If y'all will take one and pass it on down.
The top sheet is a chart. Shows boards and commissions. Off to the side of the city council. If you look at the second sheet, the printed sheet, I would call your attention to the second paragraph. The senior citizens advisory board shall serve in advisory capacity to the city council on policy matters concerning planning, acquisition, operation, use of the city senior citizen center and recommend policies on programs affecting senior citizens and perform such functions as may be duly delegated to it from time to time by the city council. What we are seeking guidance on and clarification on is how do you, as a city council, expect us to report to you? To our knowledge, our board in the past has never reported to you. I don't know whether any other advisory board in the city government has ever reported to you. There have, at times, been Parks and Recreation or Community Service Directors who advised us very strongly that we were not to report directly to the city council, that we were to discuss items with them, and if anything needed to come to the city council, they would be the ones who brought it to the city council. At our last meeting in January, we got into a discussion about this. Jen Basham was there, and she advised a meeting with the Parks and Leisure Committee consisting of Sherri Zachary, Carla Trussell, Mark McClinton, and Brandon Huckabee. After that meeting, we made a telephone request to be added to the agenda for that committee. Nothing ever came of that. So just yesterday, we sent an email request to Stacy King, again requesting that we get an audience with that committee to find out the question I just asked you. How do you want to be reported to? We got a response from Jen Basham today. I received your request to meet with the Committee, Community Services Committee. And I've spoken to Sherri Zachary. She would like to schedule a meeting. Okay. Do we report to the committee? Do we report to you guys? Do we report to Jen? That's what we need to know.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a suggestion, Mr. Chair, nominations. I would suggest that the nominations committee meet with the committee and Jen and make some recommendations and clarify this part, which is what nominations is for, to help set up those kinds of relationships. They appoint boards, they appoint commissions, and what those relationships are. So I'd encourage you to look at the 3251 powers and duties and who they report to and meet with the representatives here, and all the representatives if possible, and Jen, and bring back a recommendation to us that's suitable to everybody.
Also, through nominations, we can deal with legislative issues. So if there's something that we need to change or address in that matter, then that should be appropriate.
Okay. Anybody have any other suggestions? Does that meet with your okay?
I personally don't understand why the nominations committee is involved.
Nominations Committee make... First of all, they make appointments to all boards and commissions. They make recommendations that the council approves or disapproves them. So the committee itself and all the members of the committee and actually the functions of the committee come through nominations committee. It's just called nominations for lack of a better term, I guess. But they would actually be able to help rewrite this definition in a way that would be more clarifying.
Have they not already nominated all of us?
That has been a nomination. But what you're bringing is a request. I understand you're bringing a request to change or clarify this statement.
I'm not wanting to change it. I'm not wanting to do away with the advisory board.
I didn't say that. I said to define whose relationship. Do you go through Jen? Do you go through Sherri's committee? Or you come straight to the council? That's what you're asking. And so I'm asking the nominations committee to sit down, discuss the issue at length, and bring back a recommendation that everybody's had participation in, and the council considered that. And we can define that and give you more direction. Does that suit y'all?
It's a step.
We'll get started. Start it as of tonight. Thank you, sir. Okay, next item. Item three, which is Rotary Youth Leadership Awards. Burton Smith. I didn't call you back.
That's okay. But I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Secretary Stacy King for giving me the opportunity to announce an event that is probably going to have an undeniable positive impact on the community. As was stated in the invocation, that's what we want here in Steenville. It gives me great pleasure to let you all know and the community that the ROTH Youth Leadership Awards Program is moving to Steenville, Texas, Tarleton State University, after eighteen years in Denton and at Texas Women's University. And this is a youth leadership camp. It's a summer camp involving top students, juniors and seniors in high school from throughout north central Texas. The area runs from north Wichita Falls, south to Brownwood, east Arlington, all the way into Abilene. We will have in Steenville and on the Tarleton campus between 135 to 150 sharp high school students going through an intensive, four-day-long weekend leadership program. We call it Ryla, Rotary Youth Leadership Awards. It started back in 1971 and moved to Texas Women's University for our district in the year 2000. But it's a huge coup for our city and for our university to bring these kids here. You know, we've been real successful in reaching out to 4H and FFA. Here, we're getting a little broader spectrum of students. We're getting a bunch of urban ones from Arlington and Fort Worth, as well as those out west in Abilene and the smaller towns in the country. We've got 71 Rotary Clubs in this area and 3,000 Rotarians. And so we're picking out from the various high schools here. The Rotary Clubs will sponsor sharp students. Typically, Steenville High School, our Rotary Club sponsors, anywhere from two to four students, pays the full $425 tuition and puts together an amazing program for them. Couple of things that will be of particular interest to the city. One of the key features of the program is conducting a mock city council. And Stacy and I have been working on how we're going to get 150 people in the chambers here for our mock city council. And what we've decided on is the district court. That evidently that that will fit us. And Brad Thompson and our new county judge has agreed to let us use the district court. And that'll give us an opportunity for our students to get to see Steenville as well as the university. So we will do a mock city council. We'll have something, the texting while driving, minors drinking, employment education of illegal immigrants, something that will really hit home to these students. And they will perform the roles as the mayors and the council members, the chief of police, the city secretary, and other important figures. But in addition to this, we're also going to do a community service project. And we've worked here with Alan Barnes and Jen Basham here primarily. What we want to do is instill in these youngsters this community service spirit. And typically, what we've done in Denton is worked here with sheltered women's homes and doing landscaping. But talking with the city, we're going to hit the Boski River Trail Walk. And we are going to make a big dent in the proposed park where Collins Street intercepts, putting together a park that's going to be accessible to handicapped children as well as the others. Rotary is going to put up $3,000 to buy landscaping materials, trees and all. And Jen assures me that the city will match that. So we're looking at a $6,000 project going on.
She does that sometimes.
But, yes, yes, yes. Well, that's right.
You're out of order.
And we're not even asking you to name it Rotary Park either, but you can if you want to. But now, what we do have is a whole lot of free labor. I mean, we're going to spend the entire Saturday, 75 of these high schoolers cleaning the place up basically in the morning and doing the same thing in the afternoon, planting trees and whatever we need. And we look at doing this for year after year. After 18 years at Texas Women's University, I think we can nail it here at Tarleton and Steenville for the coming years and really build this up. But what it does is it gives these young kids opportunity to get to know our town, get to know our university. And I think we'll see a lot of them coming here in the future and rolling at Tarleton thinking, hey, Steenville's a pretty neat city. And by the way, I want to take you down to the Boski River Park, of which I had a significant role. This tree right here, I planted it. It's real special, particularly from the urban kids that never picked up a shovel in their lives. Having them out there and really getting to it. It's going to be this summer, and it's the last weekend in June. So not the Father's Day weekend, but the weekend that runs '26, '27, '28, and '29. So these kids will be here. It's 7 o'clock in the morning until 11 o'clock in the evening, every evening. We're working closely with the John Tarleton Leadership Academy for providing some of those leadership skills. And we have a number of other leadership activities for them. And we're just extremely excited about it and showing off our town and showing off our university and want the council to know about it and you all in the audience too, because it's going to be a real big deal for us.
Any questions?
We appreciate what you do. And I'm going to suggest that you call the council to help you with your project.
I've been talking to them. And we will... You know, what we would like to lean on the council is to kind of mentor roles on how a city council works. Got a special position for your pro temp.
Do that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir. Congratulations on getting into Steenville. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a professional services agreement with David Pettit, Economic Development LLC related...
Number three.
Number three? I skipped through. Parks and Services update. I scratched off one too fast. I really wasn't trying to avoid you.
I've got questions about the three grand.
No, skip that.
Well, let's start with that. So the funding that he's talking from is Parkland Dedication, which we earmarked $50,000 this year for the development of that park. So we already had the match in place.
She's a little sensitive about that.
No, I wanted to clarify. All right. So a few months ago, we realized that we haven't really updated you guys on where we're at as a department for Parks and Leisure, now that we're officially Parks and Leisure, as of October. So this is just a really quick overview of the things that we have started since October. So there's a lot of changes that have transpired over the last year, but this is really just from October on. She gave me a really sensitive clicker. All right. So we're going to start with the library. And the projects that we've completed are the Free Little Libraries, but probably the biggest one that you guys are going to see is our walking storybook that we installed in the park. And I believe this first story went out today. It's Pete the Cat. And so if you start at the Graham Street Trailhead along the river, you can walk, and there's 32 pedestals. And as you walk, each pedestal has a page in a book. So if you walk the entire length of the trail, you get to read the book. And each month, we'll do a different book. And we'll theme it based on holidays, or if there's poems, or if there's a theme for the summer or conservation. We'll do different themes every month. And it's just a great way to get kids and families out there together, an interactive piece to the trail system. They're starting a collaboration where we piggyback back and forth between parks or recreation and the library. We'll do Parents Night Out every quarter. So the first quarter is going to take place at the library. Last summer, and I am going a little bit further back, they started Summer Reading Club, and they did their first summer camp. And it was highly successful, very sold out. And then this fall, they started a program called Books with the Blue. So the first Friday every month, the police department comes over, and they run storytime at the library. They also have some fun new programs. They're doing Intensati, which I can't describe, but it sounds really, really cool. They're doing tidying up with Marie Kondo. So they're starting a lot of new programs that are gearing towards that demographic that they haven't really hit in the past. All right. The senior center, something that I think a lot of people miss is they think of the senior center as a service provider, which is one of the functions of it, but really, it's a recreational facility. And so I want you guys to realize that these are kind of the areas that we try to hit when we make our little programming model. And so currently, for health and wellness, we do Tai Chi. We do yoga. We do low-impact exercise. There's country and western dancing, line dancing. For services, we do tax aid. We do driver's safety. We offer our meal program. We do fall prevention, Medicare, Medicaid, stroke prevention screening, chronic pain management. We also do some arts. We do our book club that just got started. We do watercolor painting. We do have a kiln that we're working on getting restored, so we can do ceramics. And then for leisure, which is probably our most common thing, we do things like bingo and cards and dominos. We're also starting some new activities there. They just got We Fit donated to them, so they'll start doing some fun We Fit classes. They're doing a murder mystery dinner theater, and they're trying to get trips started. We're trying to come up with a schematic currently, finding a price point that people can afford, but still offering those programs. The airport, right now, we are completely sold out on hangar rentals. We do have one waitlisted. If you've been out there recently, or if you haven't, we do have a brand-new building by prime that's large and in charge across from the terminals. Beautiful building. And then to date, we have over 1,000 landings and takeoffs. For park maintenance in the winter, we're in maintenance mode. So a lot of times in the summer, you see us on a mower or doing weed eating or getting the ball fields ready all the time. But in the winter, that's really when we get our projects completed. And so I just want to hit a few of the highlights that we had. This right here is the installation of the book pedestals, which we finished up last week. We installed a new playground over by the OIC parks. That was completed at the end of January. The Johnson family gave us a generous donation, so we installed our first water fountain in our park system at Bill Johnson Park a few weeks ago. So that's up and running. And it actually has a pooch bowl. So you can get your... It's a pooch bowl. So there's a bowl at the bottom you can fill for your dog or cat or gecko to get a drink if you'd like. They've also been trimming trees. They've been doing graffiti removal. They've been replacing ballards. They stay very busy in the winter doing all the things so that when people are out there more in the summer, it's beautiful and ready to go. All right, for recreation, that's probably where you guys have heard the most, but you'll see a lot bigger impact. We've added some new sports, but really, our biggest goal this last year has been refining the sports that we offer and cleaning them up. We took a really long, hard look last spring at where we were at and the communication and the feedback that we were receiving. And our biggest thing was taking that survey feedback and really utilizing it to shape how we program and how we market and how we let people know what's going on. And so we've created new marketing campaigns, new communication, new training protocols. We've also offered new programs. So we're starting Year-Around Swim was the first thing this year. We used to only offer it during competitive league during the summer. Now it's year-round, so you can swim year-round at Tarleton. We started spring volleyball back, which was a program that stopped probably eight to 10 years ago. We're looking at starting archery and skeet shooting and golf this fall. So really excited about that. Oh, finally, right?
How do I sign up?
You have to be between the ages of eight to 15. Not saying you're not.
What's your point?
So that's some new programs we're looking at. But if we go to the next slide, this was kind of what we've been really looking at, was what special events are we starting? And we've started a ton of new collaborations, from things for haunted trails this fall to tastings on the trail that's next month, collaborating with tourism to put on Mulaw Fest, the Techstar Summer Concert Series. We're doing Mother's Day things and Father's Day things and draft parties and doing more for Christmas with our Breakfast with Santa. So we have tons of new special events coming. But for programs, we're also looking at making sure we're more well-rounded. So doing more arts programming, doing public art programs, doing Adopt a Spot program for community cleanup, as well as starting after-school and summer day camp with the school district. We just finished that needs assessment, so we'll be taking that to the board here pretty soon to hopefully get that program started in the fall. The other few things we've talked through was marketing campaigns, collaboration, and then strategizing what we do so we don't overshoot our bandwidth and end up in a situation where everybody's super overwhelmed, like we have been in the past. And then I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to a lot of our community partners, because we couldn't really do what we do without them. So Keep Steenville Beautiful, Optimist, Tarleton, The Master Naturalist, which features them right there. We collaborate with them and Tarleton to do our natural area along the Boski River Trail. Master Gardeners with all of our pollinator gardens. The school district Rotary, the Corps of Cadets. Erath Community Coalition is a new one that comes... That came along this last year, and it's a drug prevention, alcohol prevention program for youth and teens. We've been pretty good at implementing that. And we've implemented some screening processes to train our staff how to identify, how we can help kids or parents that are struggling in those areas. The Chamber, Ryla, and then Brunner's, Techstar, and Chicken Express, Sonic and CC's have really helped us out with our new end-of-season bashes and supporting so that that's not a cost to the citizens or the kids participating in sports. And then last slide, one of the biggest things is we've been working on defining our why. And so we're like, you know, we have a citywide mission and vision that we've adopted, but what do we, as Parks and Recreation, how do we contribute to that? And kind of our mantra has been that our job is to create community, to bring people together through our spaces, places, and programs. And so that's something staff has really been on board with, and they developed themselves. So, any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I do have a question. While we're streaming live on Facebook, do you need any more volunteers for Mulaw?
Yes.
Because I know you've been recruiting volunteers.
Yes.
This might be a good shout-out time for Mulaw volunteers.
Yes. So we need about 1 million and a half, maybe, volunteers for Mulaw Fest. It's May 31 through June 1. It's at City Park. Kimberly Dunne-Hugh is our volunteer coordinator for that. We do have an online registration that breaks it up by section. So if you really want to be near hot air balloons, you can. Or if you really want to park people, you can. Or you really just want to pick up trash, you can do that as well. But that signup is online and live.
And I'm excited you're bringing archery back, because we did have it previously. I took it down there as a child, so it's been a while. But I'm excited. And Suzie, something she mentioned that I thought was real exciting for the trail is she was looking at bird walks for kids on the trail. Has she worked on that anymore?
Yes. So the Prairie Oaks Master Naturalists that I mentioned, they have a master plan for that natural area, which includes a bird blind. And they would actually be the collaborators we would work with to teach those classes.
I thought that was a great use of the pipeline, I trust. Thank you, Jen.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? How are we advertising this community? One of the things I hear is that we're not getting the word out as much. And maybe because we're using traditional ways of doing it. You know, how are we advertising this stuff? You've got a ton of things to do.
Yes, we do. So we send out flyers to the schools for any registration deadlines that we have. We send out email blasts. We do social media posts. We have Pinterest, Twitter, Snapchat, Instagram, and Facebook. We also post flyers. Yeah, all of those things.
Do you have to meet them afterwards and explain what those are?
Yeah. We'll do that class later. That's a program. Yeah, so we are using current platforms, but we're also blending it with our traditional platforms. We did an electronic version of a program guide last spring, and it didn't take as much traction as we were hoping. So we will go back to doing a print version, and that'll be a semi-annual publication.
I'd encourage you to get with the papers. I've talked with both of them. They're interested in running more stuff about what's happening in town. They both committed to do something, and will write the articles and get them out to them.
Yes, sir.
Include that. Anybody else? Thank you, Jen, I appreciate it. Now, item four. Consider approval of professional services agreement with David Pettit, Economic Development LLC, related to the creation of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone at TURS.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, as you are aware, we had a get-together about a week ago where David Pettit and his company came in and discussed the creation of TIPS and TURS. What we are asking is to engage David Pettit, Economic Development, for the creation and guiding staff in creating the TIPS zones. We recognize three areas. One you'll be familiar with as Project CS. The second one you'll be familiar with as Project Blue. familiar with as Project CS. The second one, you'll be familiar with as Project Blue, Christie Plaza, part of Mr. Allen's property to the south, and then across to the, to the, yeah, Aldi and the lot behind it. I was trying to think of the Panda Express, Aldi would come out as Payway. Yeah. That's why I'm trying to be very careful with that. Didn't want to start a room.
You didn't?
I'm not talking to anybody from Payway. Mr. Mayor and Council, the price reported is $20,000 per TIR. Oh, I'm sorry, the third TIR that we talked about, we started talking about the area where Tarleton Crossing is, going toward the Northwest Loop on Harbin. In staff discussions, we have some other properties that we think will create an increment. So, we're recommending that the third TIR goes from the South Loop on Harbin to Northwest Loop. Be happy to answer any questions. We respectfully recommend the engagement of David Pettit, Economic Development.
Just for information, the council's heard all this before, but I'd encourage everybody, next time you're in Fort Worth, Fort Worth has, did they say 14 TIFs? Seventeen, maybe, TIF. And what that is, is a way of creating financing through growth in tax base for infrastructure projects, to help pay for infrastructure. And the one that I'm most familiar with, if you've ever gone down I-20, I-30 going east, get off on Rosedale, and once you get to the hospital district, look both sides of the hospital district and see what's happened in that part of Fort Worth, Texas. Called Fort Worth South is that TIF arrangement? And it is, they have transformed the area. And now, for example, what they're having is they're having physicians, instead of driving in from north or south Fort Worth, to work at those hospitals. They're actually buying houses and living down near where they work. And so, it's incredible for both residential, for commercial usage, and it's a great option. So.
Yes, sir.
One point clarification, the item is creation of a tax increment investment zone, TIF and TIRS.
Or intertwined.
Change the term. It's just easier to say TIFs.
TIRS just sounds nasty. I just, you know, it's not a bad word. So, I just use TIF. Okay. So, that's the recommendation. Any council members have questions? Yes, okay?
Mr. Barnes, you and I have to discuss this, and I want to make sure I understand. The increment financing is available for infrastructure improvement only, correct?
That's chapter 11, I'm sorry, chapter 311 of the tax code sets those parameters.
And the tax code does set the parameters, and the tax code governs it. It governs that. It's not going to be up to the council for oversight or those kinds of things. It's the tax code itself will govern how those funds are used to be repaid through the increment.
It defines the projects that are eligible to be, that is correct.
And defines where the money should be spent, will be spent within that area.
And it's not for, I'm going to call it construction of buildings or other improvements. It's strictly for the infrastructure.
Public infrastructure.
Public infrastructure.
It can go for streets, it can go for water and sewer, it can go for parking lots, because they are both taxable. But no, as far as providing funding for construction of the properties, just looking at the county.
Well, just to clarify, it can be for business retention and creation, and for cap financing for the projects. But it's primarily used to reinvest in the things. Your increment tools are used for infrastructure purposes. That's what the majority of them, 313 of them in the state of Texas. And if you go across all of them, the majority have used them just for that, to create a sense of place within that specific district. And keep in mind, it's no additional burden on any existing taxpayer, or even on the existing tax base. It's only on the increment piece that goes above that, which gets reinvested into that area to create the new development, which then could create more dollars to come into the community.
Which basically repays the investor for their investment in that area, that area, which is the TIRS area.
Basically. It's an economic development tool that allows that without pulling from other sources within the community. But again, most of those are in areas that are already undeveloped or need to be further developed, in which case, as Mr. Barnes said, the infrastructure piece is where you, and that's the most expensive piece for most everything, moving utilities, creating streets, doing the other kinds of things.
And Mr. Barnes and I have had this discussion. Typically, those expenses for the infrastructure, as well as the construction, are borne by the developers. And in this case, the developer seeking assistance with a portion of those costs.
Yes.
Well, it's a change in the concept that we have employed for a number of years in the city of Stevieville, for the developers to pay for the improvements that they create.
Yes, or it could be, it could be also just when it's paid, because it provides some funding that allows the timing of it to get paid in an appropriate manner. You know, a good example is if you build Box X in Dallas, where you're going to get a return rate of X dollars per, say, whatever, per square foot. In Stevieville, you can't pull that per square foot, but the construction cost costs the same. So, there's a gap in there on how to even out some of those costs. So, it allows some of the upfront costs to be reimbursed, or, I mean, the cool thing is, in chapter 311, it allows you to do anything you want. And you guys are the final say, or whoever the TIF board ends up being, which is recommended to be the council. You guys had the final say on how those funds are expended, not them.
All right. Anybody else?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I just want to, I'm still trying to wrap my head around this. I understand if it's open area, how it plays. But along the Harbin, on Area 3, along Harbin Drive, there's all that residential property that already exists.
Yes.
So, how do you manufacture the increments where stuff already exists?
The, if, let's say we were creating a TIF tonight, but we're not, you take a base value for, say, I own the home on, or you own the home on Harbin. The city would take a base value as of January 1st, the year that the TIF is created. The city will continue to receive the taxes on that base amount until further notice. As the appraisals go up, excuse me, or the tax rate goes up, however, the increment above that base rate on those homes would be put into the TIF money, and that's where the increment comes from on residential property.
It's a much slower process than...
It's more organic, yes. It would be more, it's more organic, but it doesn't...
But what is it going to generate? I mean, what is it going to actually do?
One at a time here. Carla, you were asking a question?
No.
Okay, sharing.
I was just, I am confused, though, about what you actually then do with that money, since the infrastructure's already in place along Harbin. I'll tell you honestly, I have a real big problem with this whole thing coming up for a vote tonight, to agree to form, to hire these people to form these zones, when I haven't even seen a map about where the zones are going to be. We haven't had a discussion about any of the properties, or what the proposals are, how long the TIFs or TIRS might last, and all that. It seems to me we're jumping the gun to vote essentially $75,000 to create something, and I haven't seen a map of where. And I understand what you, the areas, but the, my understanding from that presentation they gave us was there's a very strict limit around the area, and has that been drawn up already? Do we have maps?
We have proposed areas. However, their job is to, will be to refine those proposed areas, do an economic analysis on the repayment probabilities of that, to establish whether or not it's economically feasible to even do a TIF. And so, you've been provided all of the information that we have at this point. We won't know if, they may come back and say, the TIF number two, the one with the Christie Plaza and Project Blue, they may come back and say, this needs to be larger, this needs to be smaller. If it's smaller, it'll pay off quicker. We see this as a 15-year payoff rather than a 10-year payoff. Those are the things that will go into actually defining the boundaries. We do not have the sophistication at this point to do that. What we do anticipate is that, moving forward, once these three zones are created, we will be, we'll be part of the process, will understand the mechanisms necessary to do the, to create a TIF, and then we'll be able to do those in the future as well.
And one of the issues for tonight, discussion tonight, is there is a project that has certain dates attached to it, and there's a process we have to go through for public hearings, input, et cetera, from the community, and some legal issues we have to deal with. For us to look at that project, I'll just put it that way, and to back up to tonight, is pretty much putting us in a time crunch to at least get one of them done. And the engagement letter, from what I understand, is we're getting cut in rates. If you do one at a time, you get a certain rate. If you get two or three at a time, doesn't mean we ever do two or three. We can just do one.
I understand that part, but there's some mystery project out here that the council has not been informed of.
No, you've been informed. We've been informed in the project. There is a very...
Of this one that needs to be done right now?
Yes. We've had extensive conversations about that.
That now requires this TIRS, because I don't recall it coming in.
The timeframe in which their construction project was backs up to tonight, or at least within a few days of tonight. Yes. So, there's a process we have to go through to do that. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Just for clarification, this might help or not, but one is pretty well defined, because it is the project, it's the project we've talked about several months. The second and third were proposals that city staff put together that sort of helped to guide what it might look like if we do something else. And I think Mr. Barnes said it exactly right. Their entire deal, as I've heard the plan that you guys have, we've done a district review, a data collection analysis, taxable value analysis, the cash flow model, a project and financing plan, documentation support, all of those, which will define those other two or three. Those are just some areas that we just know there already is going to be some potential needs, but it doesn't have to stick to those. The only one that's for sure...
Is the one where, that one project.
Well, it sort of seems to me we should have maybe had the executive session where we're going to talk about this before, because, and grant you, we've been talking about this particular project for quite some time, but I do not recall the tax increment, the TIF coming up in that discussion.
Let me ask one order then, for Randy. Can we go into executive session? Can we bring this into executive session?
I don't know anything to do with purchase of real property.
Well, we have a, and we have it, we have specifically an agenda item for that, on that specific item, the project itself. And so, we could talk about this in a general session, in an executive session. Could we not?
Number two, motion.
And I have one other.
Hold on just a second. Let's answer that question first. So, we can go into executive session a little bit, and we can have that conversation, and we can come out and vote at that point. Is that okay?
I would appreciate it.
Okay. All right, we'll do that.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, we're looking at three TIFs, so it's 25,000 per TIF, so we're looking at 75,000 or a total?
And I think the original bid for one was 38,000. Is that correct?
Thirty-seven-five.
Thirty-seven-five, so 38,000 bucks. We've got to break by putting more than one together. Okay, we'll take this into executive session then, and we'll consider that and come back and vote on it at that point. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
One question, Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir.
And I read this, and I can't find it in there now, or I can't find it quickly. Each project is independent. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we, they will not begin on Project 2 or 3 until we authorize them to do that, correct? So, if we agree to retain them to do this, they will do the specific project that we set them to work on only until we authorize work on the other projects.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Is it, you agree with that? Okay.
So, that if the third one, for example, never comes to fruition, we're not obligated to pay them the 25,000?
We're not obligated to.
Or you want to move the third?
See, that's the whole point. He would come and make the recommendation, and they say, that property that staff had recommended isn't going to make it. They may say, here's another piece of property over here that would be instead. And the infrastructure particularly that you're mentioning about Harbin Drive is, we have a $6 million project called Harbin Drive from Washington Street to the North Loop, and that would be the, I would call that infrastructure, that we're going to have to do something with.
And the gains are going to be seen from residential changing to commercial in some areas possibly with that. So, and then it's going right back to...
I would say that's probably one of the ways that, why that particular property was, or that one zone was looked at. So, we're going to take, I'm just going to defer that to the executive session. We'll come back and vote on it a little bit. Is that all right?
Thank you.
All right. Go to the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission. Jeremy Allen. We have several public hearings, so we'll go through and make a recommend, hear the reports, and we'll go to public hearings.
First one was not a public hearing, just a report.
I understand, but we have three of them that are...
That's right.
Four of them, three of them.
So, the first one was the Planning and Zoning Commission, just a report, summary of what happened to the last meeting. We did have a swearing-in of Mr. Vance Wade, was sworn in as a new member. We did listen to a concept plan for a planned development district, Green Acres Edition, being lots 2 through 21, Block 9, Green Acres Edition, City of Stevieville. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted nine to one to approve the concept plan, so that will now go into a development plan stage, get recommendation from P&amp;Z, and then we'll come back to council, similar to like a rezone would do for you guys. The other one was a planned development zoning district by Mr. Malcolm Knute, lots 1 and 3, Block 156. That'd be off of Tarleton and Floral. There's a planned development there. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to approve that. Same thing, that'll get a, go through the development plan stage. Both of those are happening at the next P&amp;Z meeting, and then we'll come back to council, preferably in April. Last item that was, that was not an action item for you guys to consider, is they did consider and voted, Metacollar was voted by the commission to serve on the billboard policy commission that you guys wanted to look at. So, she will serve on that committee.
I think that the two items you talked about with the developers was an example of city staff and developers working together. You did a good job with that.
Thank you.
Everybody came out ahead on that.
Thank you.
Neighbors and developers in the city, put that way.
We think so. We think it came.
It was a good project.
I think everybody was truly happy, so that made it a good deal, right?
Right. Everybody's happy. At least the many as I had with them.
Yeah. If you want to, I can go ahead and start into the cases. So, case number ZA 2019-001, consider a recommendation, city council to amend the zoning ordinance by adding sweepstakes facility as a conditional use, special use, and the permitted use within the retail and commercial district. For you guys, just a quick recap, a sweepstakes facility includes internet sweepstakes, video sweepstakes, electronic gaming operations, internet cafes, and cyber cafes. Any principal business enterprise where persons utilize games of chance, including sweepstakes, where cash, merchandise, and other items of value are redeemed or otherwise distributed, whether or not value of such distribution is determined by electronic games. The P&amp;Z Commission unanimously voted to deny the sweepstakes facility as a conditional use permit within the retail and commercial district. So, that will be for you guys to open the public hearing, and then make your decision based on that recommendation.
Before we go to public hearing, do I have any questions? Hearing now, we'll go into public hearings. I'm open to public hearing on case number ZA 2019-001, consider amending the zoning ordinance by adding sweepstakes facilities as a conditional use. Does anybody want to come talk in favor of the change? Hearing now, anybody want to talk in opposition? Hearing now, we'll come out of the public hearing then, back to council. Is there a, do we, we have to have a, we don't, we don't have to overturn, we don't have to do anything tonight, since P&amp;Z made the motion?
That's right.
Is that right? We don't, only to overturn it, we have to act. Is that correct?
You have to approve what they...
Still have to approve it, okay.
You're confirming.
Seven majority.
Okay. Do we have a recommendation or a motion then?
Mayor, may I ask Mr. Thomas a question?
Sure.
Mr. Thomas, it's my understanding that you reviewed this request, and it was your legal opinion, and it was not a legal operation. Is that correct?
That's right.
And based on that, you recommended to P&amp;Z that they not approve it?
That's right.
Would that recommendation still hold to the council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
I would make the motion that we deny the request to amend the policy.
So, our motion is second. Is that actually denied, or is it for us to agree with the council?
Yeah, agree with the P&amp;Z.
Okay, so, if we're an amendment, that we make it where we approve, we agree with the P&amp;Z committee?
They turned it down. We turned it down.
Yeah, so we're in agreement.
Their recommendation was to turn it down.
And so, we would be in agreement with them. Okay.
To deny it. To deny it.
Okay. Is that good enough? Okay. We have a motion as second. Any discussion?
Was that unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Rhett, I'm sorry. I should have called that out. Let's proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Okay, the motion is to agree with the P and Z, I guess. We'll just say it that way. All right, next item. Consider ordinance. No, excuse me, it's public hearing.
Okay. Case number S V two thousand nineteen zero zero one. Alex Phanbro is requesting subdivision waiver from section six eleven. A sidewalk requirement to be constructed in nine forty-two Blue Bonnet, Steenville, Texas. Subdivision ordinance and subdivision regulations are adopted pursuant to the authority granted by the U.S. Constitution and Texas Constitution and laws, including chapter two twelve of the Texas Local Government Code. All property subdivided into lots, blocks, streets, or property re-subdivided within the city limits or within the ETJ shall hereafter be laid out subject to the approval of the city as outlined in subdivision ordinance. Subdivision ordinance, section six point zero four, streets and alley requirements, in addition to a five-foot sidewalk is required on developing side of the street to provide pedestrian safety to meet the requirements of American Disabilities Act. You guys have some, some of the criteria to approve or, or deny the subdivision waiver to regulations. The subdivision may be approved only when, in the decision-maker's opinion, undue hardship will result in a strict compliance with the regulations, the nature of the proposed land use involved in existing uses of land in the vicinity, the number of persons who will reside or work in the proposed development, and the effect of subdivision waiver might have on traffic conditions upon the public health, safety, and convenience. I do have a couple of slides, just give you guys. So you, Blue Bonnet's running north and south there. You got Northwest Highway is east and west. It is commercially zoned. The future land use does call for it to be a single-family, a single-family district, although this is a commercial property. The Texas Animal Health Commission is being built on this location. It's kind of hard to see from this shop and maybe in your packet, the very front of the property, which would be, I guess, to the east of this, is where the sidewalk will be, is being asked for the waiver for this. So you have that, and I don't, I don't think I've seen the applicant here for this. I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the council?
Recommendation from P and Z?
Was to approve the recommendation, I think it was a six-three vote.
Approve the recommendation.
To waive the subdivision waiver, six-three.
There is no other sidewalk on that street down by the rental center, is there?
No.
So we're just a lot of compliance with our consistency.
The argument was it went from offense to offense, so that's why I agree to give it away.
Okay, any other discussion? Well, let's go forward to discuss, just questions, and we'll come back and discuss, if you don't mind.
Well, and I was going to ask Jeremy if the applicant had presented any information to you about why it should qualify for this because of some form of hardship or something other than the expense, the added expense of constructing the sidewalk.
Well, when, when I talked to the applicant, it was because there was no other sidewalks out there. It didn't make sense to do a sidewalk. It would lead to nothing more than the expense of it. It was about the, you know, just, and not, there not being any other sidewalks out there. So, I mean, you know, the only thing that I could add is it's not part of our sidewalk program. It doesn't fall within a thousand feet of a school park or, you know, historical or downtown. So, you know, take that for what that's worth, but.
Okay, let's, we'll enter into a public hearing on case number S V two oh one nine dash zero zero one, applicant Alex Phanbro. Anybody want to come and testify or talk in favor of the request? Hearing now, does anybody want to talk in opposition? It's your chance. Hearing now, we'll come out of public hearing. Anybody have any other questions? Is it a unanimous decision?
No.
Six-three vote, okay, to approve the amendment, to approve the waiver.
That's right.
For our motion?
I'm not.
I'm second.
Okay, Brady makes a motion, and Carla seconds to approve the waiver. Any other questions, comments?
I just say, you know, this is, this is one of those deals. I don't want to see the guy have additional expense, but where do we go if we have a subdivision ordinance that says we have to have sidewalks? If we're, if we're granting these waivers, where do we stop granting the waivers, is my question? It just seems to me that at some point, we've either got to enforce the sidewalk ordinance and subdivision stuff that we've got in place or, or not. So that's my comment.
I agree with Mark. Even though this might not go from sidewalk to sidewalk, if you don't start, you'll never have sidewalks in some of these areas. And it, it distresses me that we seem so cavalier about granting waivers for specific properties in specific locations.
I, I agree with you guys, but I think this is where we look at it as a common sense approach, and I live there. And it literally goes into a backyard fence, and, and there's, there'll be no use. I mean, it really- And, and I understand that. I feel that same way, that eventually you've got to, you know, you've got to enforce it because we've got to have these. But this is a fill-in spot where there is no sidewalks in there, and it, to me, it is not real common sense to have that as a requirement, because it would be a sidewalk in front of that place, and that's all it would ever be.
You have the comments?
The other, the other property that's south of that, Brandon, though, if it develops between it and the existing developed property, you won't have the sidewalk to connect those then, and, and the purpose of the sidewalk is to connect properties and expedite pedestrian traffic. And that's not developed now, but it, it should, it will. It's unpoor. And, and we would hope that they would build a sidewalk, but now we've said they don't have to, because we didn't build one on the other property that's adjacent to it. That, that's my problem, I guess.
We have a motion and a second. The second was-
Carla.
Carla? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
No.
Okay, we have, that's a one, there's two no's, and five, one, two, three, four.
Six.
Six yes. Motion approved. Item six.
Consider recommending amendment to the Steenville zoning ordinance, signed regulations twelve eleven, prohibiting prohibited signs to remove a special exception for off-premise signs, billboards. So the recommendation was to basically strike that, that portion from the, from the zoning ordinance. Permit off-premise signs, that whole section, inflatable signs, bandit signs, portable signs shall be prohibited in the ETJ unless permitted through a special exception. Staff recommendation was to eliminate just the special exception part. Planning and Zoning Commission voted nine to one with Commissioner Justin Allison voting against to recommend amending the zoning ordinance to read that permanent off-premise signs, inflatable signs, bandit signs, portable signs shall be prohibited in the ETJ unless permitted through special exceptions. However, permanent off-premise signs, billboards are prohibited in the city or ETJ, and we will remove section, repeal section twenty-one point three dot D of the ordinance. Conditions for the variance. Back in January, we had the recommendation to, to approve this and repeal and replace the zoning ordinance, signed regulations. In August, we came back and we approved conditions for the board to consider. Since then, we've had multiple cases and quite a few problems through Board of Adjustment. So what council has done is, is creating a committee to look at the billboard and come back with a recommendation. In the meantime, the, the action is to, or the recommendation from B and Z right now is to prohibit billboards until we come up with a policy.
Any questions?
I have one question.
His family.
Has the committee met yet, or have you set a time for them to meet?
We have not met yet.
But it will be soon?
Yes, I anticipate it being soon.
Other questions?
So essentially, what we're doing is establishing somewhat of a moratorium, if you will, at this point. If you had to shoot from the hip, how long do you anticipate? You be general with it?
I'm on vacation next week, so I would assume, I won't, I probably won't meet during vacation.
How flexible are you on that?
It depends on who's telling me what I need to do. I mean, so I anticipate we'll, we'll meet sometime in March, probably within two weeks or so, and then after that, depends on, you know, the committee, and, but I would, I would say within the next-
Thirty, sixty days.
I was going to say forty-five to sixty days. It could be sooner, and that would be the hope, is that we can get it back in front of you by April. But I, I don't know, you know, depend on that committee and if we all agree on a, on a policy, so.
Fair enough.
We will try to expedite that and bring that back to you as soon as we can.
Any other questions? We enter into a public hearing on this. I do have one request. Tommy, are you going to, where's Tommy? You want to come speak? We'll let you address it, and you can tell us whether you're for or against.
I'm trying to keep it under two and a half hours.
Uh, three minutes.
Yeah. So, yeah, right. Some of y'all know me from speaking, but my name is Tommy Roberts. I live at thirty-nine eighteen Karen Drive in Abilene, Texas. I'm with Lamar Advertising, and I wasn't sure if I'd speak tonight, but I do think that probably a healthy dose of self-regulation at this point is probably a good idea. I think that having a little more direction on where the council and people in the community would like to see billboards or not to see billboards is, would be really helpful. I just, you know, if you have any questions for me, that'd be great, but I know that there has been some requests for more information and how billboards actually benefit the community and what the, what the cost benefit is versus aesthetics to the community, and definitely would try to, try to assist, give more information with that. I know I've provided P and Z with some recommendations as far as, you know, zoning and spacing and what that would look like if those recommendations were acted upon. But just, I mean, I think it's probably, at this point, a good idea is to take a short pause, and I know that there's been, we've had four locations approved. We have a couple that's coming up this month. I know that there are some other operators that have applications that are in the pipeline for this month as well, and maybe even next month. So probably, I think what's been approved is a pretty good, healthy dose of inventory, and it may not be a bad idea just to revisit it and take a look at it.
Anybody have any questions for Tommy? Thank you for coming to talk. Uh, of course, since we're in a public hearing, anybody in favor of the motion or in the, of the ordinance change? Anybody opposed? In favor? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing, come back to city council. So does anybody have a recommendation or a motion or other questions?
I make a motion to approve what P and Z did.
So an amendment to the sign ordinance.
That would be order twenty nineteen zero, zero three.
Zero three.
I'll second.
Brandon makes a motion, and Mark seconds it. You hear the discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate that. And you can go on vacation. Go ahead. Public Works Committee, Mr., uh, I don't know, did you approve all week?
Yes, I did.
You did? Okay, I guess all week. I guess all week then. Mr. Nix, Public Works Committee.
Tourism.
Where's tourism? I have. I don't have tourism on here. I'm missing a page. That's what the deal is. You didn't give me a full page. Okay, item seven, tourism, six. Item, hush. Tourism and Business Bureau Committee, Carla Trussell. We'll get to you in a minute, Allen.
Our tourism report, Julie's not here tonight, so I will just go through this. We had three requests for funds from the Hot, Hot, Hot Tax Funds. First one was from St. Mill Sox on the Boski Baseball Tournament. Is there a representative here from that? This is a request. Oh, Keith. Okay, you want to tell us about your tournament?
My name is Keith Phillips. I'm here to represent Steenville Sox Baseball Organization. We've, this is our, our sixth year to host this tournament. This is the biggest tournament by far that we've hosted in our community. We'll have over five hundred and thirty families coming into Steenville with kids playing baseball, starting at eight forty-five AM on Saturday, not ending until after ten PM on Saturday, and starting back up on Sunday morning. They'll be here all weekend. We, we find it to be a, a great thing for our community, and, of course, we're the kids in our program that play baseball, so. But really, in all, it, it benefits everybody.
You might have any questions? There's lots of beds and heads, heads and beds.
Heads and beds, okay.
Heads and beds, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your tournaments, and they do draw tremendous amount of financial support. Grandparents, parents, et cetera.
Thank you. We're going to, you want to take all these as one vote, or you want to take them individually?
It doesn't matter to me, but the recommendation-
You need to do them individually, okay.
The recommendation from committee is eighteen hundred dollars. That's what they asked for, and the committee recommended to the full council that we approve the eighteen hundred dollar request.
Because there's a motion, you're going to make that as a motion?
Yes, I'll make it as a motion.
Second.
Okay, have Carla make the motion, and Sherry seconds it. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is extreme roping, the Cinco de Mayo application for, are they here? Okay. Well, they asked for help with the Cinco de Mayo. It's, it's two different events. The Cinco de Mayo and the Cinco de Mayo, the recommendation from committee was a thousand dollars. This is a roping. And, and one thing that they really did that we've struggled with as we've looked at these grants is how do we prove how many heads and beds there, there were? And, and this extreme roping, they brought us a graph to show us. And what they did in a previous roping, and they didn't have it here, they had it in another town, but they just brought us a sample to show. They had each applicant fill out a form as they entered the roping, and they asked, are you staying in a hotel, are you staying in RV park, are you staying with a friend? And then they had like twelve hundred entrants, and they pulled a hundred of them randomly, and then they fixed a graph to show us what, what percentage stayed in hotels, and the largest percentage stayed in hotels. So they are, and I appreciated the, the effort they went to to prove that they're putting heads in beds. So we recommend, the committee recommends a thousand dollars to support the Cinco de Mayo class.
So we're looking at item four at this point.
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with Cinco de Mayo and not Cowboy Classic, which was-
Well, on mine, it says Cinco de Mayo first, so I don't know. I'm, I guess I'm looking at my attachments. All right, so you want me to do the first?
We're here, let's just do four. We got a, you make that motion?
I make the motion that we give a thousand dollars to the Cinco de Mayo.
Carla makes a motion. Who seconds it?
Second.
Rhett seconds it. Sorry, Sherry. Any other discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
The last one is extreme roping Cowboy Capital Classic. This is a larger event with more entrance, and we recommend two thousand dollars to the full council for that event.
Okay. Any questions? Do you make a suggestion?
I make a motion that we give two thousand dollars to the Cowboy Capital Classic.
Carla makes a motion. Who seconds it? Is there a second?
Second.
Sherry, there you go. Sherry can second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Anything else, Carla?
That, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good job. Planning and Development Services Committee, Brandon Huckabee.
All right. We met on February eleventh and discussed three items. Two, we will take action on tonight. The third one, and I'll get to those, but the third one, it was a formation of a committee to recommend a policy on billboards that we've discussed a little bit tonight. We have decided to do that. The committee is going to consist of a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, a member of Keep Steenville Beautiful Development Services Committee, billboard owner, and a property owner. And Jeremy is, I believe, going. So he has, I think we have that committee finally filled out. I don't have exactly all the names.
Do we have to, do we have to vote on that committee? We don't, do we?
Yeah.
Okay. The annual committee, okay.
So we've got that. If Jeremy gets back, maybe he can tell us exactly who all accepted.
He probably left, so you could be on that one.
Yeah, he left because he was coming up. The next item we'll do is consider a request from Habitat for Humanity for waiver of the landfill fees for seven fifty-four West Sloan. They, this is a dilapidated building they have over there that's used for supplies. They asked for a waiver so they could tear down that building. And at the time, I think there was just some discussion what they were going to do with that building, whether they were going to rebuild there, sell the land, do something of that nature. I, I believe I've talked to them since. They are def- not going to sell the land. Is that, can you correct me if I'm right? That's not correct? You still don't know? Okay. Never mind. So the, the committee voted three oh to give them a waiver up to fifteen hundred dollars for the landfill fees for that site, so. So, um, we need to consider approval for that.
Is there any discussion?
One, any motion?
I need a motion before I have a discussion. Okay, I have a motion. You wanna make that motion?
You can discuss it more, but.
Let's just do a motion. You wanna make that motion, Brandon?
Make that motion.
Brandon makes a motion, we consider the approvals and, Mark, did you second it?
I did.
Mark seconded. Now, we'll go to discussion.
One of the questions that came up at the committee, if my memory is correct, is, we've done this in the past, but it was for specific properties, but they had a specific use for that property and they were going to clear the property, build a house, put it back on the tax road, do something, uh, constructive, for lack of a better word, with that property that was either vacant or dilapidated or a lot that wasn't being used. In this case, I'm still uncomfortable with doing this without, without them having a plan to use the property. Uh, clearing the property is important, but the, the next step is also important. What's, what's gonna be done with it? How's it gonna be utilized? And, and I, who's gonna benefit from that? Is it just to clear it, uh, for someone else to buy and then develop? So, basically, we've helped someone else take care of, of, of a unsightly property. And, and that was one of the questions.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I'll just say that, I mean, just for the record, the, the last time, this is the second time Habitat's come to the council asking for a waiver of landfill fees. The first time we, we, uh, granted them a waiver of twenty-five hundred dollars and I think in response to the, the issue that Mr. Nix is raising, this time we, we set that, that limit at fifteen hundred dollars rather than twenty-five. So, I mean, I think that, based on the discussion during the, in the committee, that's, that's why we chose fifteen hundred dollars this time.
That's exactly why we reduced it.
Any other questions? Here now, proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, that's, that was three. Let's, let's do, should we do a roll call? Let's do a roll call. Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
No.
Okay. Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
I'm four, actually.
All right, so, oh, yes, we'll skip three. Four, aye. Five?
Aye.
Six?
No.
Seven?
No.
Eight.
Yes.
Motion passes four, seven. Four to three. Thank you very much. Next item, Brandon.
All right, the next item is to consider a request for a, um, waiver of permit fees in the amount, uh, for these, uh, for a different project, two forty-four West Walnut. The permit fees in an amount of six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
You come with a positive recommendation from the committee?
It came with a positive recommendation, three oh.
You're gonna make that motion?
I make that motion.
So, Brandon makes the motion, we approve, consider, uh, approve the request for waiver of fees in total of six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Second?
Second.
Mark makes a second. Anybody have any discussion? Hearing now, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate it, Brandon. Next item, nominations committee, Rhett Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Nominations met on, uh, February the eleventh also. That consisted of Carla Trussell, Alan Nix, Sherry Zachary, myself. Uh, we discussed two items and both those items will come before council night with a positive recommendation. Uh, the first item was adopting an official logo and essentially this is clearing up some issues and for uniformity and so forth. I understand we have several different logos out floating around. Uh, what we discussed and basically what we decided on was most, uh, commonly recognized as the blue script with a red star as the A right up there. Secondly, uh, we discussed a strategy map as it pertained to the, uh, balance scorecard. And we had a PowerPoint presentation by Mr. Barnes and it would probably be best if I just go ahead and, and hand that over to Mr. Barnes to, to give us an idea of that. And that should conclude my report.
You're saying there's no recommendation? There's no recommendation?
Let's do it.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, did I jump again?
No, I was just asking a question. No, you're, you're good.
Okay, I apologize.
There's no reason.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware, we have been working to integrate the balance scorecard in the city of Steenville. The balance scorecard is a, a marriage between the strategic plan and the day-to-day operations of our community, of our organization. Uh, the, the road to success is a strategy map that shows how we achieve the goals and objectives set by the council and, and how we apply our day-to-day work for that. The, the map that was presented, um, and, and you have an attachment of it in the, uh, in the, the report. But the map that was presented, uh, is, is what's referred to as a tier one or organizational map. From that, um, the departments will do a tier two map or a departmental, departmental level map. And then finally, ultimately, we will, each employee will have their own strategy map. The goal is to have our, our employees understand how their day-to-day activities impact the success of our community. I can go in greater details. I can answer any questions.
You have any questions for Brandon, Alan? Both of these come with positive recommendations from the committee. Uh, Rhett, you wanna make a recommendation or a motion for approving item two?
Yeah, uh, I make the motion that council adopt the official logo for the city of Steenville as it's presented.
Here, a second.
Second.
Alan makes a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Next item is consider the approval of the road success strategy and you say it came with positive recommendation from the committee. You wanna make that motion?
I do.
Rhett makes the motion, we approve that and Sherry, do you?
Yeah.
Sherry seconds that motion. Further discussion? Hearing now, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Is that, is your full report?
That is my full.
Thank you, Rhett. Appreciate it. Parks and Leisure Services Committee report, Sherry Zachary.
Yes, um, we, the, uh, Parks and Leisure Services Committee met in, um, uh, executive session to discuss the acquisition, acquisition of real property and no action was taken. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Personnel Committee, Sherry Zachary. Well, you got double duty tonight.
I know. The, uh, Personnel Committee met and we discussed the personnel manual that we needed to make some, uh, changes to. And the, uh, regarding, uh, hiring employees, workers' compensation, certification pay and performance improvement plans, et cetera. Uh, it came with a positive recommendation, uh, to council for the proposed changes, but Alan, would you like to add anything to that?
No, ma'am. Other than the, our group continually goes through this manual and has already found other changes that would be made.
You'll have another shot at the end.
What we'll do is we'll kind of pile them up and bring them to you as, as we get several of them.
Thank you. Is that a recommendation, Sherry?
Yes, some.
I made a motion?
Yes, some.
So, you made a motion to approve the Personnel Committee changes. Policies and procedures, man, is item two. Second?
Second.
Brandon.
Brandon made a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Is that the total of your report?
That was the total of my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Health and Safety Committee report.
All right, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, Mr. Harrison, for filling in in my absence at the meeting we held, um, back on February eleventh. Uh, just briefly, it was a very quick and short meeting as indicated by the gen items. Uh, there were some changes that were requested by the police department regarding some parking. As indicated there in the gen items, in front of the councils, so, uh, a vote was made unanimously out of the committee meeting to recommend full council adopting the proposed amendments. So, at this time, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve those recommendations, adopting ordinance twenty nineteen oh?
Four.
Four.
Second.
Brandon makes a motion and Alan seconds it. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Thank you very much. That's full of your report?
That's it.
Alan Nix, Public Works, I finally got back to you.
You finally worked your way back, Mayor.
There you go. It's a full circle here.
Yeah. Mayor, the Public Works Committee met and we had two items on our agenda that require council action. The first is, uh, an inspection service contract for the East Side Sewer Project Lift Station, which will be constructed at our, uh, water treatment facility. Uh, staff has reviewed the recommendation and it is staff belief that we will need, uh, a professional inspector to make sure that this project, because of the size and the complexity of it is constructed in such a manner that it will accept the present inflow, but also be, uh, available and, and accept future inflow for growth in the, in the future. Uh, this, this facility is, is extremely large. It's extremely deep in the ground. Uh, it has a number of chambers, baffles and different things that, that go beyond the complexities of our staff's comfort level to do, uh, in-house, uh, inspection services to make sure that it is constructed in compliance with the, uh, schematics and, and the plans and the specs that have been created. It is the committee's recommendation that we, uh, inter-entered agreement with Park Hill Smith and Cooper to provide onsite construction inspection services for the East Side Sewer Lift Station project. And my recommendation and my motion would be to approve that contract.
Second. A motion by Alan and a second by Mark. Other discussion, comments?
How are we paying for that, Nick? It's gonna be paid, ma'am. It's important. Do you need a plan? Yeah, go ahead. We, we set money aside in the budget to hire people and have them on staff and use this as the first project that they work for. Because of the money involved, we have not been able to retain anybody to fill the positions to do that. Uh, the money that is in budget therefore will be used to pay for them, which will leave, actually, given this year and next year's budget, there will be a small increment left after we pay this contract above the two hundred and nine thousand that we're paying Park Hill Smith and Cooper to do the job. The positions will remain open. They will be placed on hold until this project is completed at least. And then if we determine we wanna fill them later, we still have the money available and the funding will be available and it will be in the budget until we remove it to do so. So, we're just being a little bit more creative with things and. We're, we're using, we're using budgeted money. Exactly. Yes, that's correct. Fair enough. We're not adding anything to the project or to the budget. It's, it's budgeted funding that's already available.
Other comments, questions?
So, has, has staff, Nick, have you identified somebody that you could, or you've got in here, um, have someone kind of intern with? With this, have you identified that person?
We have one person we're coaching now.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes.
Second item on our agenda, Mayor, was the construction project that's gonna be taking, and I wanna call it Graham Street, but it's Graham Avenue. Uh, TechStot is gonna do a major reconstruction project on that, uh, coming up very quickly. Uh, they have an engineer that's retained to do the design of the pavement work. It's in the city's best interest to try to do the infrastructure improvements at the same time because TechStot will do a, a significant amount of our work to remove the top and then replace the top after we do the infrastructure improvements. By using the same engineering firm that they are using, we'll have a significant amount of the surveying, uh, the topography, the curb and gutter, a number of other things that we would have to do will be done by TechStot. So, even though this is not an insignificant amount of money, it will be, uh, uh, savings over the project had we been compelled to go out and do it on our own and, and retain services and do the entire project by ourself. Uh, the committee recommended, uh, an agreement with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company to provide the design services for utility infrastructure replacements in the Graham Avenue in coordination with TechStot's pavement reconstruction plan for that same area. And that was the committee's recommendation and that is my motion to approve that contract.
Alan makes a motion and Mark seconds it to approve the professional service contract as, as presented. Discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes.
That was the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Alan. Uh, monthly budget report, Monica.
Mayor, council, um, this financial statement is for the period ending January through first, twenty nineteen, which is four months into our, uh, budget year. For property tax, we received two point eight eight million in property taxes, um, in the month of January, which is two hundred and ninety-two thousand or a five point four percent increase over the funds collected through January of last year. We received five hundred and eighteen thousand in sales tax in January, uh, which is eight thousand under our target budget for January, but was forty-two thousand or two point three percent more than last year. We received forty-four thousand in hotel occupancy tax revenue through January. Last year, we received seventy-four thousand in hotel occupancy tax revenue. Um, we had some earlier payers last year than this year. We spent fifty-three thousand in hotel occupancy tax funds through January as compared to twenty-two thousand last year because of wages and advertising for the, um, tourism. The target budget for operating revenue is eight and a half million. We received eleven point nine million in revenue through January, which is three point four million over our budget. And this is because of our property taxes, which were due by January first and delinquent if not paid by the thirty-first. The target budget for our operating expenditures is six point eight million. We've expended six point three million through January, which is four hundred and ninety-nine thousand under our budget. The operating revenue received last year was eleven point three million compared to eleven point nine million, which is five hundred and nineteen thousand increase, which is due to our property taxes, our sales taxes and our investment interest. The operating expenses last year were six point net one million. This year was six point three, which is a hundred and fifty-two thousand increase. We had additional expenditures such as our balance scorecard training, our salary survey, the special election, um, outside professional fees, maintenance. We did some child safety grants this year that we were not able to do last year and of course, the wages and advertising in our hot fund. And we also had additional wages and economic development programs in our seed of fund. For the new programs, um, we did issue a purchase order for the rescue jacks for the fire department. Um, the water sewer and storm management plants are, plans are in, still in progress, as are the East Side Sewer and the Garfield Tank Rehabilitation. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for your report. I guess we, do we approve the report? Didn't have to be approved, no, okay. Thank you, Monica. Steenville Type B Economic Development Authority, please don't dance or sing. No Elvis Presley tonight. I got that in before you got up here.
You did, because we originally were gonna do a Broadway musical tribute. We had a wardrobe malfunction, so that's not gonna happen.
The presbyr board was sure that you would've gone.
She loves it. Well, she wants me to do a Luke Perry tribute, um, so she can shed some tears, but we're not going to do that either. We'll just go straight into it. Actually, I do have some factoids for today. It was on this day in eighteen thirty-six. Samuel Colt, you'll, you'll appreciate this, Doug. Samuel Colt manufactured his first pistol, a thirty-four caliber, uh, Texas model on this day. I'm sure that was of interest. The first municipal offices ever in the U.S. were authorized on this day in eighteen ninety-four in Seattle, of all places.
Of all places.
Of all places. The largest milkshake in history was made using nineteen hundred and fifty-five gallons of chocolate ice cream on this day in nineteen ninety-four. And on this day, and this one actually is of importance, is on this day in two thousand and thirteen, the Dow Jones surpassed the two thousand and seven pre-financial crisis levels for the first time. And, and one of the reasons I put that on there was if you think about that time period from two thousand and seven to two thousand and thirteen, there was a little bit of a downtime across, uh, the area. So, it's very important that we start making sure that we're looking at trends in addition to demographics and other kinds of information. We have, uh, with one of our, uh, vendors that we have contracted with, Retail Coach, we've talked about them in many other months. Uh, we have been able to create some different kinds of detailed reports, one like this, that allows us some additional information on very specific parts of our community as we start looking in different areas. And we wanna look at cellphone data and other things. What this will allow us to do is, uh, provide everything from number of visits, income levels of those visitors, a customer's journey throughout the day, visits per hour, visits per day, length of stay at a particular location and much more. And we've already started to collect some of this information on about four different locations in town. We can pinpoint other ones. We've looked at very specific high-traffic areas right now and we've provided these to outside developers as well as internal, uh, some realtors that have asked for that information as they try to market their, uh, particular land and/or buildings. Well, I think that's gonna be very beneficial for us. From a project standpoint, obviously, we talk a lot about those in our, uh, executive sessions, but, uh, they are moving. Obviously, Tarleton Crossings was a big one that moved forward with y'all's last vote. And I think that those kinds of things where there's an anchor or some kind of creative way of getting somebody in here has now netted in that particular area to others that are under LOI or, or LOIs that are being written in that particular development. I think that's a good, uh, uh, step forward. Uh, and there are other projects as well that are all under LOIs for new development. So, you'll see in the next three to six months, especially depending on what happens with the, the TURS vote a little bit later. especially depending on what happens with the, the TUR's vote a little bit later, what might can happen with some other developments. So that's a good one. City land meetings, this is something that I, Councilman Huckabee and Mr. Allen have gotten together, and we've met with a sampling of our land developers, or excuse me, our landowners in our community, and started to get some information from them, which I think will inform our decisions in terms of everything from recruitment, expansion, housing, and infrastructure needs. I think that will be those kinds of discussions that are outside of the norm. And I think as we meet a little bit later this week to recap some of those, y'all will be able to, to discuss those with fellow council members. The, the other thing is it does impact also current projects and what could become current projects with some of that information that is collected from these landowners, things that have not happened in quite some time. And lastly, I, I just wanted to address the piece that we talked about a little bit earlier, and that is on the TIFF deal. As far as the, you know, CETA had, it was a discussion in our last board meeting as well, unanimously pushed forward to help support the effort of creating these TIFF districts in term, financially and otherwise, to partner with the city. So we're right there beside you as we discuss these. We've got full participation. We have some representation here in the room that can speak to that if needed as well. We do underst- one thing I would say is this is one way, once we get it today, is obviously just an engagement opportunity with the, with the consultants, much like Mr. Nix had with some of his deals. These will walk us through those different areas. The TIFF piece is something that will allow us to create an economic funding source without impacting in any way the existing taxpayer, nor will it impact the existing monies that are already coming in from that particular area because it's on an increment piece. So I think it's a creative way. You know, one of the things that you've talked about a lot is return on investment in a lot of ways for us to figure out how to create, be creative in our financing without impacting and putting a burden on our taxpayers. So this is one of those ways. So other than that, Develop Stevieville, we're good.
Any questions for Jim? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is, is the consent agenda. I just want to address one item. Item two is a order of election. It is a, adding an additional voting location, which is for Huckabee? Is that what you said?
Lingaville.
Lingaville. They have a local election. So other than that, what's the notion, the preference for the council on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent as, as presented.
Mark makes a motion. We approve the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
Okay, I was, Carla made the second. Any discussion?
Second, I, I, I question if I might.
Sure.
To alter an item on the consent agenda, does it have to be removed and then voted on separately?
Does it have to? So we need a poll to, what you're saying?
I think it does.
Are we, are we ahead?
It was just that, number two was just to identify what it is.
Correct. We were just letting you know that that's what we were amending on the election where, was just adding an additional polling location.
That's all that is.
Okay.
It's not really changing the consent.
Okay, got it.
Y'all approved at the last meeting. This is a new one we have to approve to add that polling location.
Okay, all right.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Consent agenda is accepted. Comments by city administrator?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have committee meetings on Tuesday, March 19th to 5:30 P.M. Want to remind everybody that the last day to register to vote is April 4th, and early voting begins Monday, April 22nd.
Thank you, sir. Mark?
Just real quickly, Zonta Penny Auction is this Saturday. It's a fun event. Everybody go out and support those folks. And then coming up, is it 13 April, Jen? 13 April is going to be a new event for Stevieville. This is a joint venture between the Parks Department and Keep Stevieville Beautiful. And I, I asked Jen before the meeting, there's still tickets available.